We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Welcome to the Aquilina Health Center. Today is, I do this every two weeks, May eighth. Here at the Leon County School Board Meeting, we're glad you're with us tonight. We have lots of special happenings tonight. And I believe we'll kick off the events with Ms. Richardson. You gonna open with our pledge and thought for the day?
Yes. So... Hello, everyone.
Hi.
So first, giving our pledge of allegiance is Tyron Smith from Bond Elementary School. And he is in the second grade and is accompanied by LaTonya Jones and Portia Jones. And his school activities include, he's a choir member at Trinity Missionary Baptist Number Two Church. He is on the praise and worship committee. He's a basketball player at Trinity Missionary, and he loves to lead prayer at his church. His honors include, he's on the principal honor roll since kindergarten. He scored in the top five nationwide on the Star Assessment. He has perfect attendance. And he's received the MVP award on his football team at Parks and Rec. And his interests include wanting to be the future president of the United States. Loves to read and is currently on a fourth grade reading level despite being the second grade. So, giving our pledge allegiance for today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next, we have Common Wallace, who also goes to Bond Elementary School and is in the fifth grade. She not here? Oh, never mind, sorry. She's accompanied by Kia Yang Wallace. Hopefully I got that right. And school activities include just on the morning show and an honors chorus. An honor roll student, AB honor roll, and is a member of the 2016-2017 National Honor Society. Has AR achievements and citizenship honors. And interests include art, reading books, and writing stories.
And I believe, I believe Common Wallace was not able to be with us at the last minute. So Principal Wright has graced us with his presence. We're so glad you're here tonight. And we'll bring the thought for the day. Not often we get a thought from day from principal. This is a special occasion.
Yes.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure.
Usually, Common passes the torch over to me in the morning show, every morning at Bond. So now, I get to take it from her at this point in time. Just a quick thought for the day. On this Teachers Appreciation Week, I think it's something that we can all take to heart. Be the best you can, every day you can, for everyone you can. And if we do that, we'll end up being successful.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And with the parents, yes ma'am, just a minute. If the parents and administrators and all of the Bond family would please stand to be recognized for Mr. Smith. Thank you all so much for being here with us tonight. Yes, Ms. Lewis Butler.
Okay, I wanted to introduce you all a special. Ms. Jones is the PTA president of Bond. Will you please stand? Especially, she's a PTA president there. She's the mother of Tyron. And also, Sister Portia is a bus assistant for Leon County School District. The grandmother is here for Tyron. You got the whole village here. The grandmother is here. His godmother is here. Tyron, you brought the village out. Good job. Thank you so much, parents and support, for supporting your child. Success will come. It shows that when parental involvement is involved, children are successful. So thank you so much for what you do for Bond Elementary School. And Ms. Wright is the principal, and the assistant principal is here. The leader's at that school and got the community involved. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. Two point oh one changes and additions, Ms. Lewis Butler.
Yes, ma'am chair, just a minute. The superintendent recommends approval of changes in addition to the May eighth, 2018 School Board Meeting agenda as presented. Number one, item nineteen point zero eight, the superintendent recommends approval of the Allstate Construction Inc. Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Contract for Phase One A for Construction Manager at Risk for RFQ 427-2018. Construction Manager at Risk Services for Ricker's High School. New construction, remodeling and renovation and site improvements. Add contract documents and accurate contract amount. Number two, item eighteen point zero two, eighteen point zero nine, stipulated agreements for alternative placement. Remove case number twenty eighteen dash sixty-four and replace documentation to reflect this. Three, item eighteen point ten, expulsion waiver, pull. Four, item eight point zero one, RFP number four three two dash twenty eighteen. Employee voluntary insurance products, move to consideration. This is now item nineteen point ten. Five, item eighteen point two, RFP note number four thirty-one, twenty eighteen. Group health insurance, move to consideration. This is now item eighteen point eleven, nineteen point eleven. Six, item eleven point zero one, twenty seventeen through twenty eighteen. Title one, Part A, improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged amendment. One, pull. Number seven, item seven point zero three, approval of personnel action, May eighth, twenty eighteen. Replace documentation and replace the information in the public content section. Eight, item nineteen point zero two, the superintendent recommends approval to advertise amendments to policy package fourteen twenty point zero one, three four twenty point zero one, and four four two zero point zero one. Voluntary sick leave bank for public hearing and adoption on June eight, on June nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Pull.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis Butler. And before we entertain a motion, just make note, please, for the record, that number one was item nineteen point oh six, not nineteen point oh eight. Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
Oh, the motion is read.
Move by Bowen, second by Woodall, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right, Superintendent Spotlight, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, we do have a spotlight tonight. Ms. Lewis Butler, I'm sure, will be very excited, along with my wife, who's a sixth grade science teacher. At this time, I'd like to call up our Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services, Ms. Jillian Gregory, to introduce some special students to us.
Good evening, Superintendent, Madam Chair, School Board members. It is indeed my privilege this evening to highlight some of our outstanding science scholars. We at the, in Leon County Schools, we host the Big Ben State Science Fair. And we have several winners among us. And we even have a student who is going to the International Science Fair and representing Leon County Schools in Pennsylvania this summer. So without further ado, Ms. Rockwood, Ms. Marsh. Ms. Rockwood is our science developer. She works with all of our schools, K-12, and is also the coordinator for our district and the Big Ben for the science fair. And Ms. Marsh is our Director of Testing, Assessment, School Improvement, and Accountability. And she is here to help with this program as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm super excited to be here to recognize these students. The students here tonight have demonstrated a clear and concise understanding of what it means to carry out a true scientific experiment. Independently, each of the students have been judged by local and state scientists while competing against students from across the state. Having to verbalize their initial problem, explain their scientific outcomes with evidence provided through their data. Not only are each one of them academically focused, but they're a blast to be around. Witty and gregarious. I look forward to seeing what each one of them does and where their lives lead them. So, as you call your name, if you'll please come up and receive your, your award here. Akil, I'm sorry, Mary Zhao. Michelle White. Jennifer Wen. You're, thank you, come on dad. It's all good.
Why don't y'all come up here on the, come up on the stage and stand.
We want to see you.
Yeah, we want to.
We're gonna be taking a picture. May, go ahead on up, May. Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you. Sarabi Kumar. Sanja Kumar. Malika Misra. Humaya Rafi. Akil Shidhu. And I must apologize, I have, Akil's sister is also here, if you will come on up, Shidhu. And finally, Kendall Bodnar. And Akil, if you'll just raise your hand, this is our young man, who's going to be going to Pittsburgh next week to represent Leon County. And at that international fair, there are several Nobel Prize winners who will be communicating with the students. It's quite exciting. The other thing I want to point out, we do have several principals and science fair coordinators here supporting their students. And we appreciate all the time and effort you've put into it. Could y'all please stand?
And join us for the picture as well? That'd be great.
Congratulations. All right, so we're gonna squeeze together. Turn side over. Watch it up. All right, grace the head, everybody.
Akil, I see you.
You should have seen it. Wow.
Congratulations, Chad.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all so much for being here with us tonight. I know I'm not saying anything that anybody in this room doesn't know. It's been a tough year and for public education, and we're looking at rock stars out there. Rock stars that are public school products, and they make us so proud. We're so grateful to have all of you, yep, superstars. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. All your hard work.
All right, recognitions, National Merit Scholarship, Gage Owens from Charles High School.
Yes, Madam Chair, this time I'd like to ask Principal Joe Burgess to come forward and recognize this very, very special student.
All right, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Superintendent, leadership team. So this is Gage Owens, and he is at Charles High School. And actually, I want to point out his parents, which are right back here. Y'all stand up. All right, so show them some love. Because this is actually their second child to win this award. So if y'all don't mind giving them a round of applause.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure if everybody here is familiar with National Merit, but it refers to the PSAT. And so you're talking about, first of all, we have National Merit semifinalists, and then finalists, and then winners. So you're talking about the elite of the elite. And I will tell you, every day, he is just very happy-go-lucky, very humble. You would not even know it. I mean, and he's known this for months, and you wouldn't know. Hasn't changed his character one bit. And so, he is a shining reflection of the kind of students that we have and that we're proud to serve. And I know his parents are proud of him, and you know, it is just such an honor. And you know, I thank you guys for taking the opportunity to recognize students like this who do the quiet and good things every day.
Could you tell the audience what it is he got and what it means?
He is a National Merit finalist scholarship award winner. And that means he's gotten some cash and some, and course recognition that he gets to take on to the university level. And so, and as I said, his brother also won this award, was it two years ago? Am I right? Yeah, two years ago, his brother also won the award. And so, it's very rare. You're like point oh one percent of all the students in the country.
Yeah, no, you know, we used to make a big deal, is competitive between high school principals, how many semifinalists we have alone, much less a finalist and a winner. I mean, it's very rare. I think throughout the state of Florida, there were maybe thirty throughout the entire state.
Thirty-four in the state.
Thirty-four in the entire state. I mean, Gage, wow. That's all I can say is wow.
Well, is it just based on PSAT? No other academics involved? It's just your PSAT?
It's just, you know, and it goes on your aptitude, how well you did compared to the other students.
Mr. Burgess, could we hear from Gage? We can at least say we heard his voice before he's famously gone to the.
Well, after the PSAT scoring part, there's like several other processes. So when you're submitting to be a finalist, you write some essay and some other, you fill out your information. And then, for the BASF scholarship, which is the one I got, I had to submit more stuff to them. So I had to write essays and fill out information for them as well.
What grade are you in, Gage?
I'm in twelfth grade.
And where are you, where are you headed? I'm sure you have your choice.
I'm going to UF.
Going to Florida? Oh.
His parents are loving to hear that. Stay in, stay, I love it, I love it.
And if y'all don't mind, actually, I just wanted to point out, where's the White family? Okay, oh, Michelle, she's also a winner.
Wonderful.
Wow.
Sorry, her dad was just up here accepting her award for the science fair, so.
Oh. Let us hear her voice too, Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, oh, come on over. She's used to speaking, no, she's used to.
I know, I know.
Okay, so any questions? Or I just, yeah, it was really exciting when I got the, when they got the letter in. And yeah, we have to go through like several stages of testing. So like, first we take the P set, then we have to write an essay and fill out an application and everything. But yeah, I'm glad that we finally got to this point.
And what year are you?
I'm also a senior.
And where are you going? Don't say U of, don't say.
I'm going to U Penn.
I want to ask you a question too. I know you fill a lot of paperwork. What about the deadline you have to meet? That's why I noticed the seniors seem to have a problem meeting the deadline. So how you?
The deadline.
Not you all.
Right, right. Like, the time, the timeframe was actually pretty reasonable to me. Yeah, they gave you plenty of time. So, we took the P set in November, right? And then, we had until October the next year to, yep. We took it in November of our eleventh grade year, and then we had till October to submit the application the next year.
Good.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
So we test every sophomore, takes the test, then X number junior sign up to take it to qualify to become a semifinalist. And then there is a rigorous vetting process, and it is, it's very competitive. You both should be very, very proud. I know we're extremely proud of you, and can't wait to see what wonderful things you're gonna do in the future.
Thank you, thank you.
Please come and report back.
Congratulations, being a science winner as well.
Thank you. I'm so sorry I wasn't here to collect it in person, but thankfully I have my parents.
Thank you both, thank you all for being here. Congratulations, Charles. The Foundation for Leon County Schools, I believe Commissioner Nick Maddox is with us tonight for a very, very special presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Superintendent. If you'll allow me just a couple minutes before I make that presentation to speak to you as Chair of Leon County Commission. Today, we had a very, very, very informative workshop on the Alice Report done by United Way. It was amazing, some of the information they gave us, a lot of information that we didn't know about where our students stand as far as statewide and even countywide with third grade, third grade reading levels and things of that nature. The board has given me permission to say to you tonight that anything and everything that the School Board and the school system may need from us, we stand ready to assist with. We have our students' best interest in mind, and we want to do all we can to make sure that we are the best school district in the state of Florida. So I wanted to give you that comfort. And I would recommend, if you have not already done it, to reach out to United Way to have the Alice Report, a workshop or something of that nature about the Alice Report given to you guys. Those involved in ours was United Way, some of our county staff. We also had the Florida Chamber give us a, a report on some of the things, some of the numbers they have statewide. And we had a few professionals from Florida A&amp;M University, and we had Antonio Wright from Habitat for Humanity speak as well. So, I will highly recommend it and know that anything we can do to help you out, you out, we are, we stand ready to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
All right, I'll move on now to what I'm here for. I have the pleasure of standing before you now as the Executive Director of the Foundation for Leon County Schools. We appreciate the support that you provide us. But today, we are here to present a check to Ms. a board member, student board member, Karina Richardson. And I couldn't think of a better thing, a better person to present that check and say a few things about Ms. Richardson than her parents. And so I would like to have them come up and not only present her with the check, but just tell them how proud they are of her being able to sit on this board and do the things that she's done over the past year. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Richardson and his wife, Judge Astonapi Richardson.
My wife is shy. Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board Members, it is absolutely an honor to be here this evening and to be a part of this presentation. As you all know, over twenty years ago, I sat where you all are sitting right now. As a single male in this community with no children, I, with a background in education, as a school psychologist, I had an interest in improving the public school system in Leon County to make sure that every child, regardless of where they attended school, had an opportunity for a quality education. And unfortunately, that didn't exist in Leon County at the time. But I can say today, we have one of, we have an A-rated school district. And Mr. Superintendent, we appreciate the leadership that you have shown. I commend the board for the leadership that you took on the charter school issue. I know it was a difficult issue, but it was the right one to do. You are elected to oversee the public schools in our district and make sure that all of our kids have an opportunity for a quality education. And with money being siphoned off, that's gonna be very difficult to do. But it certainly, then, in, given that background, was an honor to know that my daughter would be serving with you all on the School Board. I came with her the day that she interviewed, and there were a couple of students in the lobby, and I heard them talk, and I'm like, oh my God, that's, that's Karina's competition right there. But I heard from the interviewees afterwards that, hands down, she was by far the number one choice of the committee. And of course, as a father, that made me very proud, and certainly my wife as well, when she got the news, when we got the news that Karina had been selected out of all of the students that interviewed, very bright, and I'm sure all very capable, and that she came out of that process to join you all and to have an opportunity to not only see the example that you all have set, this all-female board, but your interest in education and understanding the challenges of public education these days and being a part of setting policy to impact our schools here in Leon County. I've been so proud of her. Everywhere I go, people say, hey, I saw your daughter at the School Board Meeting. I saw your daughter on television, and she did a very great job. And so, Nina and I are very proud of her. And as you all know, her next step is to join the midshipman at the United States Naval Academy. And we're certainly proud of her and what the future portends for her. We know it's gonna be a bright future, and we're just gonna continue to pray for her and support her in all of her endeavors. So thank you all so much for giving her this opportunity, and, and it's been quite an experience for us as well. Nina?
Just thank you so much, Superintendent, Attorney Opal, and to each of the School Board Members. You are such a dynamic group. To the team, the assistants that sit here, thank you. This is such an amazing school district. Thank you for your service. We've enjoyed, I've enjoyed as a mom watching each of you and the difficult decisions you're having to make, and I'm so grateful for your service. And I want to thank our Chair of Leon County Schools Foundation for selecting Karina, and thank you for the work that you do as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I couldn't have done it better than that. And so, if she'll come down now, I'll have her parents present her with the check, which means they get to tell you where to spend it. Yeah, so if she'll come down now, I'll have the check presentation, and Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we want to hold off until we get everything said, until we get a picture? Do y'all want to hold off to a couple of minutes? I know, I'm sure everyone at this dius has something amazing to say about Karina. And I think on behalf of us, thank you for sharing your child with us. I mean, we're the ones who are blessed that she was with us this year. Not, not her, it was us. I think we all looked at her in awe and thought, I wish I could speak like that now. And I'm like almost fifty, like, I did not, definitely didn't even think about using the kind of diction that she has and the grace and poise that she has at her young, young age. I just, I can't even imagine what she's gonna do with her life. And we were blessed to have been a part of, just a little part of what she's gonna become. We can only hope she comes back to Leon County one day and then just back in this community her expertise. So I'm sure every School Board Member would like to say something. I would go ahead and read the plaque that we have for her, presented to Ms. Karina Richardson in recognition of her accomplishments and contributions as our student School Board Member for the 2017-2018 year, the Leon County School Board and Superintendent.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowen, who would like to start?
Okay, I'm happy to do so. Come on, to talk about my seatmate. I was thinking earlier today how long it's been that I've known Karina, and that's actually all of her life. I am not gonna get emotional, I promise not to. But I've known her all of her life because Karina is such a wonderful young woman. Public service is in her blood. When she was a toddler, even before then, her dad would have her in the car seat or in whatever the contraption was with him at various meetings because he was in the public service arena, if you would. And so, when Curtis would have to stand and speak, many of us in the audience would hold on to Karina for him. So I am not surprised that she has become what it is that she is today. And that's an outstanding young woman. Her future's bright. She has a very humble spirit. My mother would say she's a little piece of leather but well put together. I think that many people are gonna be very surprised by the impact that you bring, Karina, as you go off into the world and make your own way and find your way and as to what you want to do. Because you have this little small pint-sized body, and then when you speak, your words are so impactful. You catch folk unaware and surprised at what's going to come from you. So it's been my pleasure to sit next to you and to think about the looks that we share on occasions when things are happening, and you and I know what we mean. I would be proud to call you daughter. I think anyone would be. So I'm just grateful for having known you all your life, and of course, for having known your parents. You come from such a wonderful home. And I was at an activity a few weeks ago where Karina accepted, was, was chosen Miss Debutante of the Year. And she's so unassuming about these wonderful awards. You would never know all the outstanding things she's done and the scholarships that she was offered. But when the announcement was made that she was selected Miss Debutante, I want you to know that all of the folk in the audience, over fifty years of age, just went up in a wonderful hurrah. And I thought now, if she has impressed the adults in her life with that kind of caring and understanding, she does possess a wisdom much beyond her years. So I'm happy to have known you. I'm happy to call you little sister, and I look forward to what you shall yet become. And I want you to come back and visit Tallahassee. But if Tallahassee is not the place that you choose to call home, and you can do more for us and some other places, then you have my permission to do that for us wherever you need to go, okay? Love you much.
Thank you.
It's hard to follow that.
on occasions when things are happening and you and I know what we mean. I would be proud to call you daughter. I think anyone would be. So I'm just grateful for having known you all your life and of course, for having known your parents. You come from such a wonderful home. And I was at an activity a few weeks ago where Karina accepted, was, was chosen Miss Debutante of the Year. And she's so unassuming about these wonderful awards. You will never know all the outstanding things she's done and the scholarships that she was offered. But when the announcement was made that she was selected Miss Debutante, I want you to know that all of the folk in the audience, over 50 years of age, just went up in a wonderful hurrah. And I thought now, if she has impressed the adults in her life with that kind of caring and understanding, she does possess a wisdom much beyond her years. So I'm happy to have known you. I'm happy to call you little sister. And I look forward to what you shall yet become. And I want you to come back and visit Tallahassee. But if Tallahassee is not the place that you choose to call home and you can do more for us and some other places, then you have my permission to do that for us wherever you need to go, okay? Love you much.
Thank you.
It's hard to follow that. I really appreciate everything you just said, Ms. Bowen, and I ditto every word of it other than I haven't known her since she was born. But I did see her over on the track field, I believe, when she was in middle school and, you know, just coming to the board sort of with you. It's just been wonderful to watch you and your, your poise and your grace and your humility and, you know, knowing your parents as I do, just so proud of all of you for having such a fine daughter.
Yes.
And just thank you so much for your contribution. One of my highlights of every board meeting is to, very quietly at the end, frequently you'll just chime in with some very thoughtful, insightful thing. And I'm like, oh, right. I'm so glad we have a student like you on our board and I look forward to our new student. And I hope you, you're going to help shape him or her, I don't know who's been chosen yet, but I hope you will pass on your wisdom and knowledge of how to be a great student board member. And thank you so much for your service. You're welcome.
I ditto everything, Karina, that my colleagues have said about you. It's so true. I, I can remember I was sitting down there for a while with you at the beginning and welcoming your board and you were so poised and dynamic. And as time went on, you started chiming in and you were amazing. And I meet constituents all the time saying how amazing you are. So that speaks a lot for the community and we thank you for that. I also know, I can remember when your dad would push you down Orange Avenue in, in the past, putting the carriage all the time, you were there. And not knowing in one day that you would be on the day sitting up here with us with your talent. And because of the fact that you attended Fairview and went over to Rickers School and IB program speaks volume for you, that you as a leader at that school, you went there and you, I think you have 4.6, very good. And that's why the academy recruited you, because of your ability and who you are and because your parents, your mother and your father always been there for you, supported you. And they are great leaders. And then you followed your mom and the 25 women you need to know. Now you're the young lady, the women up and growing that we need to know. And it's because of your style, your obedience, your character, commitment and your leadership. You have all the accolades and I salute you tonight. Congratulations, Karina.
All right, we get a big group picture with Karina?
Quickly, so the $500, I'm, I'm thinking, well, Uncle Sam's paying her tuition. I'm pretty sure he already has her wardrobe picked out, so he don't need to make any decisions about wardrobe, right? So the $500 should be somewhat flexible to help with other expenses, right?
Airfare.
Airfare, there you go. So ironically, Karina, at the end of my junior year, my, my father died and I had a Catholic priest in town, Father Kerr, that kind of took me under his wing and nurtured me through the rest of my high school days. And he went to the Naval Academy. And his roommate was a guy named Roger Staubach, which you have no idea who Roger Staubach is, but he was an all-pro quarterback for the Dallas Cowboys, one of my childhood idols was Roger Staubach. I have a picture of him on my wall in the office. Unfortunately, I did not have the academic aptitude to be accepted to the United States Naval Academy, although I would have loved to attend, but I was a cadet. And I have a, I have a question for you because that is, that's a commitment. My nephew Cole was seriously considering the Air Force Academy and that's, that's a, that's one of those poker games, you're, you're all in. Can you tell me briefly or us, what led you to want to become a cadet at the Naval Academy?
So I actually get this question a lot because a lot of people who, well, at least who I've met so far, they, you know, have been committed to Navy since they were young, you know, just like how the FSU UF rivalry is, it's like Army-Navy, you know, they could never imagine going to West Point. But for me, actually, I went to a STEM camp at the Naval Academy because my dad heard about it and thought this would be a great program for you.
He would.
And I applied three years before getting in, but I finally got in. I went, I loved it and I decided that I really wanted to apply to their summer seminar, which is a camp that's supposed to emulate actually being a midshipman your first year. And I went this past summer and I just loved it. I loved the camaraderie. I, for some reason, loved waking up at six in the morning and going to do personal training and then having a full day's worth of activities after that. And so I came home and pretty much, right after I got home, I decided I wanted to apply and took on that process with the help of my parents because it is no easy feat, but we got through it and now I'm here.
Well, it's, it's quite, it's quite the commitment and I know that it's very competitive to get into that camp and usually if you get into that camp, you get accepted. But you know how many thousands and thousands and thousands of young people apply to go to one of the academies and, and it is certain, it's certainly an honor. So having been a former cadet myself, one word, perseverance. And always, this too shall pass. But you are, you're a very brave, courageous young woman and, and we're all very proud of you for wanting to serve your country and for further your education, your career. But, and God bless you and we wish you nothing but the best, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you all of you.
I, I just wanted to add very quickly.
Just quickly, one thing. I just have a little going away present for all of you and a card.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't know where I put them, but they're here. So I'll give those to you guys later.
Wonderful.
And I wanted to add too, while you all are coming down, that, that Karina is from a military family. My dad did 27 years in the Navy and I had four brothers that served in the Navy. I was the only one of eight that didn't serve in the military, but.
I can see that.
And there were 43,000 applicants for the Naval Academy and 1,700 were selected.
I know you have another like half hour if we're lucky. It's a slow night compared to what we're used to, so this is, this is good. Oh, the whole Richardson family, Tallahassee jewel, thank you all. Okay, District Advisory Council, I think none to date.
Hold on, hold on, being cued that there's a video that goes along with our recognition? All right.
Tonight, we are very, very proud to announce that Ms. Karina Richardson will be the 26th student member of the school board.
I've met so many incredible people, I mean, sitting on a board with all women, you know, who are so smart and dynamic and, you know, passionate about what they do and.
She is a student in the IB program at James S. Rickerts High School, a 4.6 grade point average.
We are meeting in the Aquilella House.
This young woman has a following in the community and at her church of older adults that you would not believe. And so if these people are able to see the kind of wisdom that she brings, along with the wisdom and the kind of sincerity and leadership from that of her peers, she's on her way to greatness even now.
You can tell that she really cares about her Tharp Street corridor.
I've enjoyed having her as my left-hand arm seat buddy.
I absolutely love sitting by her. So she's always, you know, giving me little tidbits about different issues and, you know, advice and it's just, it's so amazing to be able to sit by her and to have learned from her.
I've, I've learned some things and I've learned to appreciate the wisdom that she brings in that young body.
I think for right now, students need those resources right now.
I'm sure she's ready. So as your first official duty as student school board member, will you please?
There's so many opportunities that have been opened up through this position and I've loved learning. I would encourage any student, you know, look into it because I've enjoyed it immensely.
Ms. Henson has tissues if we need to.
Can we go home now? Madam Chair, can we just, right, call it a night, go home?
Again, blessed to have you with us this year. You're going to be missed.
So you have to send for me. She has to send for me, Curtis and Nina. I have to go with her, y'all, to her graduation. Okay, on the bus, our plane, take me, okay? I'm done.
Okay, 5.01 District Advisory Council, none to date. 5.02 Student District Advisory Council, none to date. 0.03 Title I Advisory Council, none to date. We've been busy the last month, so everybody's taken a little break. But we have a very important week this week. 5.04 is 2018 Teacher Appreciation Week Proclamation. And I know, I know that, how many, how many of us are Leon County Public School products? Everyone?
Teachers.
Teacher? No, I meant products. Went to school here, went to school here. Just me?
Oh, come on.
No, somebody went to Leon, did y'all grow up here in Tallahassee? Really? Oh my, Rocky, it's me and you, I think. Okay, so I, I'm going to take a minute to go back and I think we would all like to recognize a teacher that made a difference in our life. And I know I went to Kate Sullivan Elementary and, oh my gosh, Ms. Hartung, Ms. Hogan Mueller, I wish I knew where these people were because they, I remember them. I remember them like they were yesterday and I remember the importance they had in my life. And then, and then moving on and becoming a teacher myself, Susan Davis at Hawkeshires, volunteering in her classroom, she encouraged me to become a teacher. So, and I know we've all had those. Do we have a shout out to a teacher that we would like to recognize tonight, Ms. Lewis Butler?
It's Dr. Elma Jenkins, Biology.
Okay.
I'm going to recognize my grandmother, Rose Powell Williamson, who was an elementary school principal for 35 years.
Very nice.
And I'm going to recognize my English teacher, Mamie Cooper, who has gone on to be with the Lord but who was very inspirational in my life and I credit much with helping me to know that I really could be, have been an English major if I'd wanted to, but I chose social studies.
Ms. Richardson?
Okay, so I kind of have a lot.
Wait a minute, school's not over yet. Final grades haven't come out, you might not want, let's pick one from earlier.
All of my teachers.
Obviously, all of them are great, but.
Yeah. Okay, so Ms. Frazier, kindergarten, Ms. Brink, Ms. Kirkendall, Ms. Clay, Mr. Cameron, Mr. Harrington and Mr. Fontaine.
Very nice. Superintendent?
All right, I have two. First and foremost of all, wife Christie, 25 years science teacher at Mott Elementary School, was at Raw for a long time. And then Dr. Linda Teague, teacher at Leon, who helped me through the sudden death of my father my senior year. I don't know that I would have made it through high school without her. So we have all been so blessed and fortunate to have amazing teachers in our public school system.
We really are, we are really are. So the proclamation celebrating May 7 through 11, a Teacher Appreciation Week reads as follows, "Whereas teachers are the most important factor to the success of students in Leon County schools, whereas educators are critical to achieving Leon County Schools' mission of preparing students to become responsible, respectful, independent learners equipped with the critical thinking skills necessary to compete in our global society. And whereas teachers encounter students reflective of the immense diversity in culture, religion, ethnicity and socioeconomic backgrounds found in our community. And whereas teachers spend countless hours in a labor of love preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community service, often using their own resources and time. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community to help shape the future of our society by developing compassionate and respectful, hardworking, intelligent citizens. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Leon County School Board proclaims May 7 through 11, 2018, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Leon County School Board strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it and personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this 8th day of May, 2018, signed by the Chair of the Leon County School Board and attested by Rocky Hanna, Superintendent." Great, very nice. Good teacher. All right, no persons to be heard tonight. Thank you. 7.01 School Board, oh, we're on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for consent?
I move the consent agenda, it's printed.
Second, moved by Bowen, second by Wood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. All right, 19.01 brings us to Superintendent recommends approval to advertise amendments to Policy 5610.05, participation in extracurricular activities and repealing Policy 5845, student activities for a public hearing and adoption on June 19, 2018.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Bell is at another event this evening. We spoke about this item extensively yesterday during our agenda review. We've worked it several times. We had it out there, we pulled it off, we reworked it, reworked it, it's easy for me to say. And now I've brought, brought it back a second time. We feel good about where we are now with this policy. It falls in line with our other policies as concerning to students' rights and to attend school and suspension and expulsions. It basically says that if a student is eligible to attend a school, they're also potentially eligible, as far as we're concerned, to participate in extracurricular activities and sports. That still doesn't mean, however, that, that a site administrator or a coach or a sponsor may on their own have different rules and that if those athletes, student athletes or others are not following those rules, they may be disciplined at the school level. But as far as the district is concerned, they're, they would be eligible to participate if so recommended by the site administrator and the sponsor or coach.
Do I have a motion for approval? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Wood, second by Lewis Butler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. 19.02 was polled, 19.03 is a public hearing and adoption. The superintendent recommends following a public hearing, approval of the balanced 2018-19 capital outlay budget as presented. Open the hearing. No speakers, closing the hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I move 19.03.
Second?
Moved by Lewis Butler, second by Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
If I may, Madam Chair, on that item, and Mr. Albert is here, but I'm, I'm really excited about this, about this capital outlay budget that was passed. We, of course, identified a large amount of resources are going to be targeted towards Rickers and, and Fairview over the next several years. We've noticed, if y'all saw in the paper the other day, there was an article about all the construction going on in Tallahassee and Leon County. Well, with that work, it's increased the cost of construction throughout our region, which is a concern of mine, of these prices continuing to grow, grow higher and higher. So we may end up having a meeting later this week with the Capital Outlay Committee to, to move some of those funds around. The totals will remain the same, but we may be in a position where we shift some of the Fairview money, or the committee recommends to shift some of the Fairview 11 million over to Rickers to expedite that, that project. And it may slow down just a little bit, the Fairview project. But all, all in all, I feel very, very confident in this plan, very, very sound budget, we're not have, asking to borrow any more money, you know, to incur any more debt. So I'm, I'm excited. I see Danny here and members from Ram and Allstate Construction and others that are here, ready chomping at the bit to get started on these very, very important projects on the south side of our community.
Yesterday at the workshop, Ms. Lewis Butler said that there's going to be an unveiling. Could you talk about that a little bit so that our public knows about that?
Yes, ma'am. On Tuesday, and I'm glad you brought that up, on Tuesday evening at James S. Rickers High School, Allstate Construction and Hoy Stark will be making a presentation of the, of the anticipated, the greatly anticipated changes that will be made at that school over the next two years. So I invite everyone in the community to come out and join us. I believe it's at 6 o'clock at Rickers High School next, the 15th.
15.
Right, next Tuesday, the 15th, so we can kind of have an unveiling. But I'm, I can't tell you how excited I am about that project and the project at Fairview and they're, they're long overdue and the kids in the community deserve this.
They do.
They do.
And one other thought, Superintendent, I know that, so we all want Fairview and Rickers to move along and then we've got some waiting in the wings at WT Moore and in fact, I was out there today and the pods and making a better use of that space. And I'm wondering if we've looked at, because of all the construction that's going on, I think Leon County's talked a lot about the additional homes that are being built and if there is a chance for increased revenue for us and that, and I mean, I know you don't want to borrow, but if there's a chance for increased income that we could have, feel safe to borrow and get the things that we need done before students.
So we also have, so we've projected out five years with our capital outlay plan and I didn't really want to go too deep. and I didn't really want to go too deep tonight, but I, but I can. So we're gonna get really tight, our budget's gonna get really tight, in maintenance, in technology, in transportation, in order to, to complete these projects at Fairview, Rikers, and Moore without having to, to borrow any more money. And I'm very excited about that. We, a year ago, a little over a year ago, had about $230 million of capital debt. We're now under $200 million of capital debt. I'm very proud of that. So the goal is to try to live within our means. Now, if, if something arises and Wilani or other things pop up and explode and we have to go borrow money to build, then so be it. But it is, it is my goal not to incur any more debt, at least in the immediate future, and to pay down what, what our current debt is already. And I think we can get that done by tightening our belts with Facilities knows this, Construction, Maintenance, Technology, Mr. Nimmens, we're gonna try to take advantage of E-Rate, which is a program where we can put in technology and get rebates back from the, from the government to take advantage of those opportunities and to, to do a better job of, of, quite frankly, living within our means. But again, we're, you know, this is very fluid. If we see population shifts and growths that we cannot accommodate, and it may have to become some, you know, some tough decisions. We talked potentially about having to do some rezoning. But I feel very confident in the capacity with our elementary schools and our middle schools. It's a high school area that's kind of, kind of great, iffy right now, but it may be that we end up having to build a new wing at, at Charles High School, as an example. But that's, be a heck of a lot cheaper than to build a new school and a staff in a new school, and, 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 and. But at least for the immediate future, the Rikers, Fairview, and more projects are steaming ahead without incurring any more debt.
Um, Mr. Superintendent, would you say, because DOE did not approve the new school on the south side because of capacity, that we are saving money by upgrading Rikers?
Oh, absolutely. And what we've, what we've convinced the Department of Education is that a lot of those buildings are older, so it won't be putting a Band-Aid on old buildings. They've given us an opportunity to gestalti, is that right, Danny, Martha? Oh, see, I, I'm a slow learner, but I can learn, to gestalti some of those older buildings and to replace with new construction. That's the exciting part, where we can stay right there on the hill. I mean, we have big plans for that school. I mean, Tuesday night, so come out the fifteenth and, and look at these plans. We're talking about taking down, I believe, potentially seven buildings over the course of the next two and a half to three years, replacing with a huge two-story building that'll have, have over forty classrooms, and then making a big state-of-the-art courtyard in the middle, kind of behind where the administration office is now, that they can have outdoor pep rallies and, 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 and. So this summer, by the end of the summer, we'll have all the ballfields back on that property. We'll relocate the tennis courts, and we'll tear down the first building and we're, we're up and running. And, and Fairview, right now, they were already started, they already shut the gym down at Fairview, and they're completely gutting, that's about a five million dollar project you're gonna see here in just a minute, that, that Ram's doing in Phase One of Fairview. The second part will be a new administration, administrative wing along with a new cafeteria, a new dining area at Fairview. And then the third phase at Fairview will be complete renovation of Building Three, which, the, the building in and of itself, the shell is in good shape, but it used to be old pods and it's kind of threw up walls and there's a lot of wasted space that's already being heated and cooled. So, you can't hardly tell by my voice, I'm very, I'm excited about all these projects and more, and more. We're gonna do a lot of site work at Moore this summer, and then over the next several years, as we generate revenue, we're gonna do away with those old pods and add some, add some student stations. We aren't looking to add on right now at Moore. We're taking advantage of the empty space that's already, the empty square footage that we're not using for student stations at this time. So I think it's the best use of our resources. We're not incurring any more debt and we're getting some work done that's way, that's, you know, that's greatly overdue. But in the meantime, we will be keeping our eye on other developments in the community. And if the need arises, then we may have to borrow money, but honestly, that's gonna be the last thing I bring to you as a recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. I, I catch your excitement and I think that we do good things in this community for all of our students. But as we keep an eye toward the future, particularly with the issue that was raised by the Chair, as we start to look at new homes that are being built in the, what is that, north?
Northeast.
Northeast part of the county, I hope that we will keep a close watch so that as the growth is going in whatever direction, it does not siphon off whatever is left of the Thorpe Street corridor. That's still pretty important and there are some good people in that area as well. I know we're not going into long.
Look, I went to Augusta Raw. I, I couldn't agree more. My first, my first teaching job was at Amos P. Gobby High School. I loved the Thorpe Street corridor, but, but I think, again, we, we, we might have to make some tough decisions and look at school zones because we do have capacity. We have some room at some schools and not room at other schools, but I think we can shift them, make those tough decisions, shift some of those populations around without having to incur any more debt.
And that's why I'm loving what you're saying, because we're getting ahead of the curve so that the community is knowing what we're doing and they won't come back with some back off and leave that alone. So I love us being proactive and being transparent in what we're doing and I'm excited about what we're still to do.
Can't wait to see the Rikers.
Yes, that'll be fun.
That is exciting.
Thank you.
I would hesitate and just, just have to disagree a little bit with both of you, that the explosion is here. And I, I've said it, it's not, I, and I, I'm pretty sure our Moody's rating is still good. We're not, we're not, I know that we want to not borrow if we don't have to, but our top priority is to take care of students. And I've said it once and I'll say it again, my district is, there is no room at any of the high schools that, that corner that Wilani development. The explosion is here. And I just would caution us to not be planning for that, and I know there's need elsewhere and we want to take care of those things, including the elementary that we're gonna take care of with Wilani and I think middle school we're looking at, but that high school development, that just, that worries me. I mean, it really worries me that we're not planning for this. So I would hope that if there is a point in time where the board does need to entertain the borrowing, no one wants to do it. I think we all, we're, we're all educators, right? We, we try to live within our means. We understand that. But, but I think that we, we have to take care of our students. We don't want to add portables. We want to make sure that we're, that we're doing what our students need. So if that discussion, you know, if it, we feel it's time for that, I want us to, yeah, throw it out there, but not tonight, but maybe another night.
All right.
All right, 19.04, public hearing and adoption. Superintendent recommends following a public hearing approval of amendments to Policy 6330, selection of professional service providers for construction projects effective May 9, 2018. Open public hearing?
No speakers.
No speakers, close public hearing, motion for adoption.
Move the Superintendent's recommendation?
Second, moved by Bowen, second by Wood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. 19.05, public hearing and adoption. The Superintendent recommends following a public hearing approval of amendments to Policy 6320, purchasing and contracting for goods and services for public hearing and adoption on May 8, 2018. Public hearing open.
No speakers.
No speakers, close public hearing, motion to adopt.
Move the Superintendent's recommendation?
Moved by Bowen, second by Lewis Butler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. 19.06, Mr. Albritton, we don't like to repeat each other, so I'll let you take this one.
Okay, the Superintendent stole all the thunder, but I'll go ahead with this. 19.06 is for Allstate Construction.
I did the lightning. Now you bring the thunder.
All right, rumble. 19.06 is for Allstate Construction. It's Superintendent's recommendation for Rikers High School, new construction, remodel and renovation. The guaranteed maximum price is $5,259,762. This is for the site improvements, the demo, the first phase of the records, getting the project ready. It takes care of the parking and such. And remember, this was a estimated project of $30 million.
Move approval? Second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Woods, move approval, second, and Ms. Bowen's, a second. All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. 19.06 passes.
Thank you. 19.07, this is Superintendent's recommendation for Ram Construction to be the construction manager at Raw Middle School Gym.
Not Raw.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, it could be Raw.
I'm looking at Ram and saying Raw. Excuse me, I'll start over.
Say Ram.
19.07 is Superintendent's recommendation for Ram Construction at Fairview Middle School Gym Phase Two, Building Two. Their guaranteed maximum price for this phase is $4,227,832 and 24 cents.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, 19.07 been moved by Ms. Woods, second by Ms. Bowen, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes, three, zero.
Okay. Item 19.08 is a change order for Albritton and Williams at Sealy Elementary Administration Renovation Security Code Upgrade. This is a request for 142 days, no additional charge. This was due to the ADA ramp at the front of the school that we could not get completed over the Christmas break.
I move the Superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
19.08 been moved by Ms. Bowen, second by Ms. Woods, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passes, four, zero.
19.09 is for Dewberry Engineering. This is for the Woodville K8 School Site Improvement Project. It's an increase to their original price of $900, the additional services for archaeologists to do a site visit and prepare a report for the Division of Historical Resources.
Move the Superintendent's recommendation?
Second. Moved by Bowen, second by Wood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, if I may, on, on, on that item, real quick, and again, I see members of Allstate and Ram here tonight. I'm counting on you guys, right? Count, we're, we're all counting on you. I know you're gonna do a great job with those two facilities, but, yeah, anyway, we're, we're very, we're, we're very excited. But it's a, you know, it's a big, it's a big job. Both of them are big jobs and big responsibilities, but you've done outstanding work for us in the past. I have no reason to believe it won't happen with these projects as well. So, thank you so much. The quick, Woodville, what we're doing is when we bought some land at Woodville, we had a piece of land, it was blocked by a, another private owner, we bought that, so now we're going in and doing some site work and renovations and land prep, build the holding pine, we're also building a big garden area. And we've talked about the, Julian, how, where do we leave our, what do we? Table, the mouth, table to food, what?
Farm to fork.
Farm to fork, farm to fork. So we're looking at creating a, a big agricultural program down at, at Woodville that I'm excited about. The first phase is having an area where we can expand, the kids can still have ballfields and areas to play, but we can still have a big garden area that kids can go out and get a hands-on experience as well. So that'll be the, kind of the first phase at, at Woodville, to draw kids to try to build that middle school program down there in the southern part of, of the county.
Love that. Excited about that. All right, move approval?
Second.
I think we've already, you've already done?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I believe we're on 19.10, right?
Right.
Yes, RFP number four, 32, 2018, employee voluntary insurance product. Mr. Wimberly?
What we're bringing to you is a bid that we did at the behest of, actually, the Auditor General wanted us to do this, and also when Rocky became Superintendent, one of his goals was to put these, all these things back out for bid. So that's what this does. We had twenty-two agencies that were solicited, twelve proposals were received. The insurance broker, Rogers Gunner Von Hub is here. We have Bart Gunner and, and Walker Cuts, who evaluated these for us and helped us decide which ones were the best to choose, and the insurance committee chose the recommendation you see in front of you.
Thank you. And just to add on, we, we had a lengthy discussion yesterday on the benefits that our employees receive. Not only do we have one of the best HMOs, I think, in the country, I'm always in shock when I hear other school board members talk about their insurance options in other parts of the state. We're so lucky here. But not only that, our school board absorbs more than 50% of the cost for all employees, I believe.
We'll get to that on the next board.
Okay, cool. Well, anyway, just had to give a shout out to, just a great, it's important that we take care of our people and sometimes it doesn't show up in their paycheck as much as we would love it to. It shows up in other ways and this is, this is invaluable, so thank you.
Tax-free benefits.
Can't beat this. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Bowen, second by Wood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. 19.11, RFP number four, 31, 2018, group health insurance. Yeah, this is the one I was.
Yes, this is.
All of the other ones good too, I'm sure.
It is. People take advantage of, of all those benefits. But this one is, is really is the big money ticket item for you guys. And it was the big, kind of the elephant in the room. When the auditor wanted us to bid, I think they thought that we'd have all kinds of insurance companies coming in here and vying for business, but that just doesn't happen in our market because there is really only a couple of networks. It's CHP and Blue Cross Blue Shield. If I screw up, y'all jump up here and tell me I'm messing up. So, so we had CHP and Blue Cross Blue Shield, no surprise. They proposed a 5% increase, which is really reasonable with today's premiums. And so the, the insurance committee met and they, they chose to accept this. But I thought it would be important just to point out that the total cost of insurance this year for total health insurance premium is 31.2 million. Of that, the board contributes 22.9, I mean, excuse me, 22.4 million, and the employee portion is eight point, almost eight point nine. The board contributes 72%. The employee pays 28. That's, that is a significant amount of money every year. If that 22 million went into salaries, just straight into a bottom-line salary, it would be a 12% increase. So you're, you're paying 12% above and beyond what the salaries are for the health insurance benefit. Now, that serves about 2,965 people, so, and you have 4,500 full-time employees, so some employees don't take advantage of it, not because they don't want it, but they probably have a spouse or usually their spouses take care of it. But anyway, I think it's important to note.
And one thing, we talked about this briefly yesterday too, that seven, what'd you say, 73% Merrill, is an, is an average with all those 2,900 employees, that's, the average is 73%.
I have one more, if I don't know how to get there. How do I, how do I get to the next? Excuse me?
Chris is gonna help you. Chris will get you there.
That one, yes, okay. This describes, and don't pay attention to insurance and type, that shouldn't be there, but single, two-person family, family two, independent, those are the types of insurances we have. The, the big one there, 1,983 people, are the single premium. The, the next highest is 478, which is the family. And then 365 is the yellow one, two-person, and then 137 is what we call our, you have two employees who, who have insurance. So that is the breakout of how the insurance world looks in our county.
Well, I think everyone's grateful to have Capital Health Plan and Blue Cross Blue Shield here in Tallahassee because they're great providers and the fact that this helps teachers on their tax bill is invisible, but it is all pre-tax, so that's, that's great too.
I just quickly want to recognize Mark Hicks with Capital Health Plan is here with us and, and recognize our partnership with Capital Health Plan. The reality is, you know, our expenses in health insurance far exceed a 5%, and we've been averaging about seven and a half to eight percent. So this year has been a, a great year, and even on the Blue Cross side, the, the increase came out as zero, so flat from last year. And then also Pat Feldman with Standard, Standard Life is here with us too, and he was part of the prior issue with the voluntary benefits. And he's, they're, they're taking over the LTD and the voluntary life and also the board-paid life. And all the prices on that piece came down or stayed the same for our employees, and so I thought that was a, a real important effort. There is a lot that goes in to this process and June Kale and Merrill and his staff and, and then, you know, the insurance committee. But I think it was really worth it because the effort is to really, because most of those benefits, those voluntary benefits are paid totally by employees, and so, except for the board-paid life. And so we were able to see decreases in that and also decreases on those individual policies while they're trying to stretch that dollar, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
So appreciative to all of you guys for taking care of us, literally. I mean, literally, you take care of thousands of people here on Leon County side, thank you.
I should recognize Dina Howell, the pay, she's Director of Payroll and Retirement and Pam Faulkner is the Benefits Coordinator. They, they put a lot of effort into this. And just one more point, we're really fortunate as a school district to be in the type of situation we are. If, if we were just by ourselves and we had to go out and get insurance by ourselves, we'd be seeing double digits probably. Because we have a really tough, what's the word? Demographic, but not demographic. I was thinking of the loss ratio, yeah, the loss ratio. So by ourselves, we don't look too good. When you put us in with a big pool, it helps bring our rates down.
Some more than others, right Merrill?
Especially me.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
You do, so move.
Second.
By Bowen, second by Lewis Butler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, information items upcoming, meetings, reports from board liaisons, superintendents' comments.
Quickly, Madam Chair, so this week is Read Across America with the United Way of the Big Ben. I think I'm scheduled to go read at Astoria Park on Thursday. And we encourage you all, there's slots left, so if you want to sign up to read.
I read today.
Oh, there you go.
I read at Moore, they were adorable.
All right, all right, so there you go.
How you sign up?
Sign me up, Chris.
So we'll see, see Commander Petley there in the back, and at the end, he, he will get you signed up to, to participate. Also, as we talked about earlier, this was, this is teacher appreciation this week, and I'd like to thank my staff members for waking up early and helping me distribute. Well, last year, we did little candy bars, and just a little thank you for our teachers. And this year, we did lifesavers, and talked, and told our teachers how much we appreciate the impact they have on the thousands of lives of the children in our school district. Wish we could do more, but you know, when, when there's 2,300 of them, it, it adds up. But, but anyway, it's just, you know, time for us, there's something we can do to say thank you. You know, we could never pay them enough, as you, as you know, but, but we certainly appreciate their efforts and what they do every day to help make our school system a better place and help people like Karina realize, realize their dreams. So our, our children are in very good hands with our teachers.
Absolutely. All right, continuing concerns, don't have any?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Um, I, I have to tell you that it's, it's a good time to be a board member, to be alive, because the other night, we were at a wonderful celebration.
Hi, Dan.
Celebration good times, come on, it's a celebration.
All right, say it, Rocky. Congratulations, Mrs. Superintendent, to you and your staff. It was a wonderful evening of elegance and celebration of the outstanding work that your, your staff, our teachers.
And I thank you, I don't think I've, my tires might be slashed, I, well, I do, I mean, Dr. Gale, and I said that she is amazing. I mean, this, and her, and her team, and her team. But I mean, it went off without a hitch. I mean, to serve, to have a sit-down dinner for a thousand people.
Yeah.
And the food was good.
Oh, it was, it was good. For banquet food, it was, it was great, it did.
It was even hot.
Right, and I, I lost my bet. I owe Dr. Gale a green smoothie. Yeah, so I have to make good on that, on that debt, I think, tomorrow morning. But really, Michelle, I can't thank you and Sharon and your team enough for your hard-working efforts. I mean, it really made the night special for our teachers, our school-based employees of the year, Glenn Howell reckones, our retirees. I mean, it was just, it was, it was a great night.
Eight, eight twenty-three PM.
Eight twenty-three.
Okay, good job, great fun.
Awesome. All right, uh, new, new issues from board members?
Nothing. I just wanted to say one thing real quick. Commissioner Maddox mentioned the Alice Report, and it really does dovetail a lot in with our Title I report. And I would just request that we host a workshop, ask those people to come in and give us more information with the effort toward a master plan of what we're going to do with this information. And, and since the county commission has now offered to do whatever we need, and we have one of our city commissioners sitting in the audience, I really think if we could start working together as the three units to look at this community as a whole, we can make a lot more progress. So I think we should have that workshop and then a follow-up to, how can we work together to combine our resources to make things better for our kids?
Absolutely. I totally agree. I wish I'd said that, but to dovetail on it, it would be so wonderful to talk about those issues that have even appeared in the newspaper. We're all in this community together, and I know Commissioner Richardson agrees. And so to start that kind of discussion with that offer, I, I agree, we should accept it.
I think a workshop would be right timely, because we need to really sit down and face each other and discuss. Communication is always good.
We could maybe have a joint workshop with the city commission and the county commission, and really figure out how, how can we combine our resources and make a difference.
I mean, United Way, though, is at the crux of that. They need to be a partner. I know you guys all know, but for anybody, the Alice is asset limited, income constrained, employed. And I dare say, so they're talking about people that are not below the poverty line, they're just barely making it meet. And when they talk about the population, I think back, and I thought, that was me. That was a single mom making $37,000 a year, trying to raise three kids by myself. That was it. And that was, that was it. And so it's the people that don't qualify for anything, you're kind of just above that level, but we have a huge population in Tallahassee, and I would dare say that touches a lot of our school employees. And how can we help that population? And how we, how can we notice them and say, you know, there are services out there for you. What can we do to help this population get to the next level? Because they're stuck, they're not, they're not getting assistance, but yet they're not, they're not reaching that level where they're, can put anything back, can save anything, can help their kids go to college. So, but definitely, United Way is at the, is at the epicenter of that conversation. So I think that would be a very good conversation for us to have.
Much to do.
If I may, Madam Chair, you mentioned that partnership, and we know one issue that is staring us in the face is how we're going to make good on the, the new mandate to have an armed security officer in every one of our schools. And we have a good partnership with our local sheriff's department, and had conversation of what I considered a very promising conversation with the chief of police. We've kind of gone off some stumbling blocks, but we would be, loved an opportunity maybe to bring, bring the city of Tallahassee into that partnership along with us. I know there may be some concerns or issues, but I think it would be wonderful if we could get TPD, invite the city into our elementary schools here where our kids at a young age are building positive relationships with the young people. What better community policing could there possibly be? That our young elementary school kids are building positive relationships with the city police officer, and that our middle school and high school kids are building positive relationships with a, with a deputy sheriff. I think it's a win-win. But I would love to, if we need to speak to city commission, to try to bring them on board. I'm not sure exactly what the hurdles they are, but would love to have maybe a joint meeting to talk about it. But I think it's just, it'll be a big win for us to have the county government on one side and the city government on the other, where we can go out and say, all of us together, we're coming together to protect our children, to meet this law, without having go, going into our coffers and pull out money that should be going for school supplies and textbooks and teacher salaries, and, 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 and. But if there's a way to pull that off, I just think it's a win for our, our entire community.
I agree.
Ditto, ditto.
One last thought, next week, reminder that we begin graduation week, weeks plural. And so our meeting will be, not next week, but in two weeks, is to be at 3:00 PM. So the date of that meeting, May 22nd, we are here at 3:00 PM, which means our persons to be heard will be, because we moved them up in the agenda, so it would be pretty much at the beginning of the meeting for anybody that wants to speak at that day. But 3:00 PM, so we can then move on to graduation that night, I want to say it's Leon, actually, after that meeting, might be, might remember. But anyway, so 3:00 PM on the 22nd, and any further?
Oh, Martha is here from Physical Plant, and she's never here hardly, because she is our real boss over there. Hey, Martha, how are you? If y'all don't know Martha, you need to know Martha, I promise you that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Adjourned.